Thank you very much. There'll be no gender adjustments this evening. Okay, all votes will be done by roll call since we have on virtual as well. And is there any couple of comments in the audience this evening? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move over to, I'll contain a motion for last month's meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion hand over.
I'm second.
Second by Cohasset. Okay, all those in favor will be, roll call vote will be everything.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson? Hanson, right? Norwell? Mr. Mo? Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Okay, that's all in favor, that's a motion carries. Okay, we'll slide into reports. Turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, children's torture of the June 30th preliminary numbers. Basically, the, um, cover page, there's some pictures of, um, some of our students that are, that are working, constructing on the, you know, our fires, the park and headquarters. A lot of work done in the building this year, so we're great. Page one, cash balances above 4.7 million, 4.4 million dollars. We get a little over a million, you don't have to deserve. The revenue for the month, we had the, um, revenue from Norwell, that was the only comment, having paid their, their, um, prior may assessments, so that money came in overall a little over a million dollars. We did get the second piece by transportation aid, um, that came through, um, for people transportation, you know, the CC grant. And on the expense side, um, payroll number is always the biggest dip in June because, based upon the school contract, the teacher's contract, they get paid over, um, the summer. So what we have to do is we have to approve it here for lunch or the period because of the fiscal year, so they will get paid. So that's why the payroll is 2.1 million dollars for, for the month of, um, June. Everything else goes down to a little above 2.9 with spending and everything and, um, on target, we'll talk a little bit about some motions on, you know, end of the year spending and what our results are, but, um, overall it's, um, pretty good, so.
I'll ask for motion under report.
Abbott.
Motion by Abbott. Second by Hanover. Roll call vote. Abbott.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson. Right?
Hanson, yes.
Norwell? Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, that is a vote. Jim?
Uh, Lawrence, Mr. Petroselli?
Yeah, Lawrence, sorry. Twenty-four, twenty-four A, twenty-five, twenty-five A, twenty-five dot one, twenty-five dot two, twenty-five dot three, twenty-six, twenty-six dot two, and twenty-six A. Total, 2,287,688 dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion, Situit?
Second Cohasset.
Second Cohasset? Okay, all those in favor will go with a roll, roll call vote again. Abbott?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell? Molly, you on yet? No? Okay, Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
Malden and Whitman?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Jim, transfers? Budget transfers?
Budget transfers at the end of the year, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts, um, for, um, just cleaning up budget items, we have savings very in various accounts, and we also have, you know, additional expenditures that come through at the end of the year based upon our surpluses. So we have about 253,358 dollars worth of transfers into various accounts such as utilities and payroll taxes. Rookers comp, we had 16,000, we had an audit, and our payroll just went up so high that we, we got hit with a little bit more on the, um, the Rookers comp audit for this year. And capital level, based upon some of the, the votes that were made last month, we have that, uh, over and above what the budget and amounts are. So those are all the accounts that are going, that are, they were adding funds into the budget, and we hadn't identified a lot of savings in the salary account, so, the 253,000,358 is coming out of the salary account, so.
Motion.
Motion, Hanover.
Second.
Second, Abbott. All, roll call vote, we'll go again, uh, Abbott.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Hanson, yes.
Norwell? Molly, you on yet? No? Okay. Rockland? Yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen, that is a vote. Uh, Warren signing the, the appointment, after the Warren signing, the, the appointment, I'll ask for a motion to appoint Bob Haywood as the Warren signing, designing.
He's signing the design.
I'll move Situit.
Second Cohasset. Situit. Cohasset. Anybody have any questions about this position at all?
No.
Great. Okay, roll call vote again. Abbott?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Hanson, yes.
Norwell? Rockland, yes. Situit, yes. And Whitman?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen. That is a vote. Now we're off to, I do have a couple more things. Okay, yep, update, Jim?
Yeah, on your, in your package tonight, on, um, we have two proposed motions that ties with, um, and they're normally a lot more, we might have seven or eight on, on the last couple years, this year we only have two motions that we have to address here at the July meeting. One is procedural, um, motion one would be to hereby move to recover 629,068 dollars and 97 cents of the 2022, 2023 non-resident tuition in order to reduce the 2023, 2024 assessments to district towns.
I'll make that motion. Second. Okay, we have motion by Hanover, second by Abbott.
And this, this money?
This one just doesn't want?
This is the money that we receive from our non-resident towns, of our resident students, and we collected in fiscal 23, but we use that money to offset the fiscal 24 assessments that went up to all the towns.
Okay. All right, do another roll call vote with this, uh, this is on motion one. Okay? It hereby moves 629,068 dollars and 97 cents into non-tuition funds in order to reduce 23, 24 assessments to the district towns. There was a motion made by Hanover, second by Abbott, and we're going to do a roll call vote with Abbott.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell? Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Jim, uh, motion number two?
Is to hereby transfer 73,386 dollars from the surplus regional transportation into the regional transportation fund. So we have a transportation fund, reserve fund that we've set up many years ago, and every year we can, if the state gives us more money than we budget, we can transfer that money into the regional transportation fund and then use it, we have to use it within the next fiscal year, so. It's just a way to take a little bit of surplus that we receive, um, put it in the bucket, and we can use it for fiscal 24.
I'll entertain a motion on, uh, Jim just said?
Abbott.
Situit, second.
Motion, Abbott, second by Situit. Okay, roll call vote, uh, we'll call for that, will be Abbott.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Norwell? Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
That is a vote. Thank you very much, Jim. I'll send you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, next on the agenda here, we have, uh, superintendent, uh, the chairman has no comments tonight. Superintendent Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items to update the committee. First off, the Commissioner of Education approved our amended regional agreement, uh, which is the final step in the lengthy process, uh, that all of our communities, uh, and, and the town of Marshfield participated in. We're in the process now of figuring out how through, uh, some DocuSign or some paperless method, we will, uh, will have, we'll have a representative from each of our towns sign the document as well, but it becomes official with the signature of the commission. All of those amendments are, are thereby approved, and that, again, confirms Marshfield's membership in the district to become effective on July 1st, 2024. So, uh, that agreement, we're gonna, we'll put that amended agreement on our website, and, uh, like I said, we'll have, we'll have a copy that will have more signatures as we did with our previous copy, that might just take a little while to obtain those signatures. Second item I want to let you know is that I, uh, was able to, uh, bring a group of folks from Pembroke around the school a couple of weeks ago. As you may recall, they formed a regional planning committee at their spring town meeting to begin the process of having, uh, their own conversations about the, uh, the merits of, of seeking to join our school district. And, uh, the members of, uh, the regional planning committee included members from Pembroke Public Schools, a parent representative, and their town manager. It was a great conversation, uh, they asked a lot of great questions about the process, uh, about our plans going forward. The, the next step, I think, at this point, as, as you know, we, as, our, our school board has a regional planning subcommittee, and so should Pembroke decide that they want to approach us for further conversations, we would, we'd activate the regional planning subcommittee and, uh, to be able to have some conversations. But I've, uh, I, I was pleased to be able to, uh, to have them, I thank Bob, I thank Bob Hayward, uh, making his lengthy commute to join me. He also was able to, uh, assist me on the tours, we run around to see the shops, so thank you for that. MSBA project update, uh, we are, although it is the summertime, uh, we're not taking our foot off of the accelerator. Since the close of the school year, we've had, uh, multiple visioning sessions with our project manager, design team, and consultant. Visioning sessions are opportunities for parents, students, and staff to talk about what we would like to see in a new school. And the sessions are not merely to have us sit around and say, "We need more space, we need more space." But we're pushed to think about the design of the school and what we value in a school. So all of these visioning sessions were recorded, we're going to be, uh, our project manager will be placing them on a soon-to-be-live website. It's going to be called southshoretechproject.com, and we'll send out information to make sure our school community and the general community is aware. But this will be a separate website, and that's pretty typical for school building projects where you want to house all the important video archives and documentation in one location. So southshoretechproject.com will go live very soon. It'll contain the, uh, the feedback from the folks who participated in visioning sessions. What we have upcoming are a series of school building committee meetings, which will be probably on a, at a rate of one per month uh, from early August through December. And we'll be, and at our next school building committee meeting, there'll be discussions around what's going into the timeline over the next six months. We will start work with the design team on taking the vision and putting it into an educational plan. Ultimately, that plan is what gets approved by the school building committee, and the design team begins to look at what our priorities are and begin to put it into various models. We're still a long ways off from knowing we're going to do this design at this price. However, we should be able to start getting a picture of that close to the end of this calendar year. So the conversations will become less abstract, the options will become more clear. So, uh, there's definitely an opportunity there. I'd also like to, I, I, this, this offer will be extended to all members of the school building committee, but we are looking to make arrangements for a site visit to Cape Tech and Harwich. Cape Tech built a brand-new school in 2015, and DRA, our architectural firm, was the firm that built Cape Tech. So we're looking to, we're looking to see if there might be any interested folks who might want to go see Cape Tech later in August, and perhaps a second school in early September. We have a deadline of, uh, we have a, we have a late September deadline for our first submission to MSBA, which will include the educational plan. If we're going to talk about how we prioritize what we value, it would be nice to be able to set foot in a structure that represents some of what has probably been adopted by other, by other schools. So more to, more to be said on that, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the, with the pace of the progress, and you'll hear more firsthand at, at the next school building committee meeting. Next item I want to update you on in your packet are some suggestions that I'll bring back to you at our September meeting for admissions policy revisions. The two, the two most noteworthy revisions that I'm bringing, one is a, uh, one is to make the system more efficient, and that's to remove the recommendation from the grading criteria for the admissions process. The recommendation process is, um, is essentially, the data that we're getting from this doesn't reveal much information about the candidates. It's a lot of paperwork processing, processing for our own staff as well as for staff at the sending schools. So I don't think that it is, um, I don't think it's necessarily bringing information for candidates. And so that's one of the items that I'm including in the recommendations. And the other, there, there were some other minor ones, and I'll be happy to go through them at our next meeting, but if you have some time, you want to digest it a little further. There's another category on, on discipline where I've added in a threshold involving student suspensions. And there's also an update to the grading categories, so that the weight of, you know, so if you get an A, B, C, D, or F in your, in your sending school, uh, in your, in your seventh and eighth grade grades, that it is equally, the, the points you can earn are equally spread out. The, you might recall that the Department of Education in making Chapter 74 changes in recent years included the change that admissions policies must be reaffirmed, uh, on an annual basis, typically by October. So I bring this to you tonight, and we'll, and we'll bring up the conversation again, uh, in September. In terms of, uh, summer project updates, uh, we have a lot going on at the school. There hasn't been a summer in a long time where I haven't said something along those lines. In no particular order, uh, as you know, we secured a 2.5 million dollar state grant to provide renovation options for our culinary and carpentry programs. The carpentry program is being, uh, is being gutted by our own folks, which is fantastic, and they are making unbelievable use of this space. It is going to have a huge impact on kids right now. We're going to be able to have more kids with better elbow room and placement of equipment and horizontal table space. And our, our, our carpentry team and some student workers are working very hard on that. We're also in the process of working with the Hanover Fire Department about making arrangements to not only enclose the canopy that you might recall is outside the carpentry shop. By enclosing that, making that ADA accessible and weather tight, we will add considerable internal instructional space to spread out even further. And we're also having plans to move the walk-in refrigerator and freezer from our culinary program right here, just outside the brick wall. That will increase some instructional space in, in the, in the back of the shop. The, the grant, fortunately, they didn't give us this great grant and then tell us we had to do it in six months. So we have another year on this grant, but we're going to begin work as soon as we get the final clearance and, and the, and the plans are, are finished, uh, being drawn up. Very, very pleased with that. Progress that we're making next door with, uh, with the adjacent property that's becoming the district office, that is on schedule, and by mid-August, we will be making some moves, uh, over there. And what we are also in the process of doing, the, the tangible benefit of part of it, one of the many tangible benefits, first of all, is that we get to sit in administrative meetings and say, "We've got space to do something," which we don't get to say very much around here. And one of the things we're doing is we're removing the wall between the cafeteria and the IT office, and we're going to put in a glass wall that will allow additional cafeteria space for students during the lunch services. Students who may want a less noisy lunch, but it's easily, one can easily supervise, and also creating some very valuable club space or meeting space for, for students or for adults and after hours. So those are some of the, those are some of the major summer projects that we're working on. And I'm, I'm generally pleased where, where the progress is thus far. Beyond that, um, last time on my, on my report, uh, Mr. Chairman is, is to turn over to Sandy, if she has any updates she'd like to add, as we're reaching the midpoint of the summer. Is it the midpoint? Oh, my goodness.
I think it is. As always, it's my pleasure to be here and to be a service to South Shore Tech. Our report this month is brief and future-focused. I am pleased to let you know that we have filled all of our teacher vacancies for the 2023, 24 school years, and we transitioned to work of preparing those teachers, uh, for work at South Shore Tech. As always, we have orientation days in August with our staff, but to advance their work and opportunity to know our systems, we're doing a series of three online workshops, uh, in early and mid-August on our information systems, on Power School, on how to use our Google, uh, classrooms if they need those for that training, and as well as to give them some oversight and some information about our new grading systems. Those are all things that are new to anyone in education or new to anyone working at South Shore Tech. That is, um, we're, we're hoping that all of our new teachers are able to make those meetings in person, however virtually, and opening it to all staff who want a refresher. I can also let you know that we are, um, we've had a great transition with our new transportation coordinator, Scott Yard. It is as if he's a veteran, a person here, he has all of the bus routes completed, he has all of the drivers assigned to buses, and he has met with every driver to review their routes. That is done. Check. So that is exciting. Additionally, we have our new athletic director, Grant Monk-Browery, who's been very active this summer, both in person and virtually, has already made inroads in conversation with coaches and students, and is ready to be on, onboard, uh, preparing for our first, uh, his first fall, student-athlete parent meeting in early August. I'll be able to record out on that the next time we meet. I really look forward to introducing to all the educators at our fall meeting, um, and, uh, really, I'm excited about our, what we're doing in August, which is really, again, focused on, we're re, we're ready for school. Our focus is on, on refining procedures and processes to ensure that we are streamlining everything as well as possible to make use, uh, the best uses of everyone's talents and time.
Very good.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything in the business? At that time, we stepped into, uh, superintendent evaluation. Okay, in your package, you see this, it's in the cycle for evaluation for our superintendent. Sure, he has the boxes here that he's, uh, checked, and thinks I'm very pleased with the, the assessment that we have all created for him. Does anybody else have any comments about the evaluation of our superintendent? Hearing none, not saying anything?
Mr. Chair.
Would you like to speak?
Well, thank you. For the record, if you would just note, um, the ratings, it just has to be noted publicly, because the, uh, the ratings for the standard.
Oh, okay, thank you. To approve council evaluation, which the committee has given ratings of proficient on all four standards, an overall rating of the proficient. So I'll entertain the motion for proficient.
I'll motion Dan Salvucci Whitman.
Whitman, motion by Whitman.
Second. Second by Situit.
Second by Situit. Okay, uh, discussion, anybody have any discussion about superintendent?
Yeah, if I may, uh, Whitman, uh, again, as I say every year, Tom, I really think you underestimate your quality of work. You, we've got a lot going on in our school system, and you are putting it together, and you're doing a great job, so. Uh, I would go a little higher than what it comes out, but it is what it is, and, uh, I think you're a lot better than what you feel that you are. That's all I have to say.
I agree with Mr. Salvucci for Whitman.
Second that also.
Yeah.
All thirded.
I, I would have put down exceeds, but, you know, he's, doesn't like having the big shoulders, so.
We don't want everybody saying how good he is.
So we have a motion by Whitman, second by Situit, roll call vote on the evaluation of our superintendent. Abbott?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Hanson, yes.
Norwell? Mr. Mo, you on? No? Okay, Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman? That is a vote.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you all.
Okay? And, uh, your packet there, you'll see document number eight, uh, which is a donation, uh, for HBAC, and it's an ARS rescue rotor heating, cooling, and plumbing. They're in West Bridge Water, Mass, is donating and delivering 11 pieces of equipment, including mini splits and condenser units totaling approximately value of $12,375 to the HBAC program.
Situit makes a motion.
Motion, Situit?
I'll second Whitman.
Second Whitman. Okay, roll call vote will be Abbott.
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson? Right? Hanson?
Yes. Hanson, yes.
Situit, yes?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen, and having, just to have purchased one of those condensers, that's a great value that they're donating. Okay, I think now I'll turn it over to the meeting and turn over to, uh, Jim, for annual reorganization. Okay?
Jim's hitting the answer for the gavel. I need the gavel, Tom. You just, yeah, whipping it in properly.
I'll, I'll pass it to him like a. So this is for the annual reorganization.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Okay, this is the annual reorganization of the, uh, school committee of the, um, South Shore Regional School District. The way the, the election is outlined is that we go around the room, we, we entertain nominations for chairman, um, and then seconds, and we go around and, and then until we close, until there's no more nominations, we, we close the nominations. At that point, um, if there are more than three people that are nominated, we do a ballot, and we narrow the, the ballot down to the top two people. At that point, we do another ballot again where only those two top people are on the ballot, and then we vote again. And then we'll, we'll vote as many times until the tides are broken. Um, right now, I believe we have seven members that are in the building, so it probably, there won't be a tie unless there's an extension and so forth. So at this, and then we'll do the same process again for the vice chairman. So, um, at this point, I would like to open the floor for nominations for chairman of the school committee.
I'll nominate Bob Mahoney for chairman.
So, Hanover nominates Bob Mahoney. Do I have a second?
Abbott.
I can Whitman.
Okay, Abbott, seconds. Thank you. Um, do we have any other nominations for chairman? Hearing none, I make a motion to close the nomination process.
So move Whitman.
Second, Situit.
Okay, could we just have a voice vote for, um, for the eyes to, to close the ballot?
Abbott, yes.
Cohasset, yes. Hanover, yes. Rockland?
Yes.
Whitman?
Whitman, yes.
Situit?
Yes.
And Hanson?
Yes.
So the ballot is closed with Mr. Mahoney being the only candidate. Um, on this floor, Mr. Mahoney will become the chairman for the 2023, 2024 school year. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Robert, gentlemen.
For the position of vice chairman, I open the floor for nominations.
Rockland, I nominate Tom Petroselli.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second for Mr. Petroselli. Do we have any other motions for, uh, vice chairman of the school committee? Hearing none, I make a motion to close the ballot for?
I'll move Whitman. Second, Situit.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Abbott?
Yes. Yes.
Cohasset.
Cohasset, yes.
Mr. Hanover.
Yes.
Mr. Rockland.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Situate.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So with a vote of seven to nothing, the ballot is closed for vice chair, which affirms Mr. Petroselli as vice chairman for the South Shore District School Committee, Southern Regional School District for the fiscal twenty-three to twenty-four tech basketball. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. And still in another year. I really enjoy it. At this point in time, I'll turn to my colleague for Whitman.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Sorry, can I do a request for action? Anybody have any requests for action? Hearing none, seeing none. Now I will turn to my colleague for Whitman.
Yeah, I motion to adjourn with all due respect.
Second Situate.
Whitman, second by Situate. Okay, Abbott.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Hanover.
Yes.
Hanson. Frank? Hanson? Okay. Rockland, yes. Situate, yes.
And Whitman, yes.
Great, gentlemen. Thank you very much. We are enjoying. We are.
Thank you.
We are in our lock for the month of August, so we will reconvene in September. Thank you very much. Thank you. Enjoy your rest of your summer.